I'd like to welcome everybody to Saturday's Town Council Meeting, Monday, February 26, 2024, 7:00 PM, at the Council Chamber. And item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call. Madam Secretary?
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Shenyer?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Dow?
Present.
Counselor Lazo?
Present.
Counselor Marquetti?
Present.
Counselor Montigny?
Present.
Counselor Ortiz?
Present.
And Counselor Rivas?
Present.
We have a quorum. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Subcommittee Reports. A Department of Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We have a meeting scheduled for 6:00 PM on March 4th in the Veterans Conference Room. And also, we have a ARPA meeting this Thursday at 4:30 PM in the Parent Conference Room, I believe it is. Thank you.
Moving on to Education and Services. Counsel Rivas?
Yes, we had a meeting on last Wednesday, the 21st. We have recommendations on Items 12, 13, and 23 on the agenda today.
Moving on to General Government. Counsel Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on Wednesday, the 21st, at 6:00 PM, and there are a few items towards the end of the agenda. Thank you.
Moving on to Planning and Development. Counsel Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no report at this time.
Moving on to Protections of Person and Property. Counsel Shenyer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting on Wednesday, February 21st, and we have some Agenda Items that were all reported out favorable.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Considered Accept Town Council Minute Meetings for the February 12th, 2024. Your motion?
It's a motion. Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. On line 330 of the minutes, Counsel Marquetti called a recess. I don't call the recess. The Town Council Chair calls the recess.
Thank you. I'm sorry, what line was it, please?
Line 330.
Thank you.
Line 434?
Yep.
I voted no on Agenda Item 15. I was waiting for an update on the numbers.
You were waiting on an update?
I was waiting for an update on the numbers, but I voted no on Agenda 15.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? If not, oh, excuse me, Counsel Rivas?
Line 313, just a spelling, Receiver Villar, V-I-L-A-L-L-A-R-A-R, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other changes or additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Chairman's Announcements. I'd just like to say, as Chairman of the Dog, excuse me, the Animal Control Shelter. We've had a meeting. We sat down with the Engineer McClure, and we also sat down with the Animal Control Officer, who brought in a lot of the regulations to work on the actual blueprints and the engineering of the new dog animal control center. We did pick the location. It is on Gulfwood Road, inside the DPW compound, so to speak, in the Vincent area. We looked at the South Street property. We looked at other buildings in Southbridge. None of them seem to be cost-effective as the DPW facility, with utilities close by, the land in abundance, the security, the gas pumps that you have to go to. So, the Building Committee voted to use, at this time, the DPW on Gulfwood Road, the facility, to build a new free-standing building. The Engineer will be getting back to us now that everything's been fed into it by the Animal Control Officer on the regulations, in the state regulations. So, we're going to be waiting for a phone call from Mr. McClure to sit down again and to look at some prints. He's going to move forward on the actual investigation on the property itself, and the boundaries and everything like that, so that is full steam ahead. I'd like to speak to the Town of Southbridge on an issue that has been a problem for Southbridge for the ongoing years, since we were taken over seven years ago. And as Chairman of the Council, I moved forward a little while ago and started talking to Boston, started moving forward with a sit-down with Holyoke. The Town Manager and I sat down with the Vice Chair of the School Committee of Holyoke, Erin Brunel, the Chairman of their Council, or Council President, Tesla Murphy Rombeletti, and Mayor Josh Garcia. I think that the Town Manager and I had a great dialogue with Holyoke. We are similar communities. We share the same frustrations, and we are going to be working together. We have other things set up, but before we move forward to Boston or further with the Holyoke group, we need to sit down, and I've already called the Chairman of the School Committee, and I'm going to be calling School Committee members, where I can sit down and talk about some of the things that will blockade a total turnover to the Town of Southbridge, now that we've learned so much about the process itself. So, I've contacted Montina Shea, I've contacted some of the other members, and as I move forward, I want to sit down with each and every one of them. What we need to do before we go to Boston and beat the band and do wonderful things, what we need to do, in Southbridge, on us, we need to build some bridges, we need to knock down some barriers. There are walls that should not be there. It will be embarrassing for the Town of Southbridge to move forward and make demands when we're not doing our homework the way we should be doing it, or aligning ourselves with the way we should be aligned to make this move. There are some things I'm going to be requesting of the School Chair, and I think we're going to be moving forward on that. This Council is going to provide the leadership, but we are going to lay the building blocks for the turn it back over to Southbridge properly and expediently. I think we're going to move forward. It's a great, great communication right now. We've got a partner out in Holyoke, and I think we're going to continue to move forward with that. I'd like to thank everybody for listening to that. I mean, it's a touchy situation. There are a lot of people that are sitting up here in different roles that were here in the beginning. They know what happened. We saw it happen, we fought it, they didn't listen, they took us over. I sit here today with "I told you so," which holds no water, does not mean anything. It's just, if we don't learn by the mistakes of the past, we're going to continue to make mistakes going forward. So, I think we need to pump the brakes. I'm in favor of full steam ahead, but not until we get our ducks in a row in Southbridge to do what we are supposed to do, so we can go forward to Boston and make a presentation that is palatable, where we can actually be in the room to take this thing back over. Thank you very much. I'd like to move on to Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just a reminder that early voting is going on here at the Town Hall. The hours for the remainder of the week will be as per the regular Town Hall open hours. It's for the Presidential Primary and the Special State Representative Election, which is being held on March 5th in the Community Center. Earlier today, I was advised that a police officer from my department has informed us that he will be transferring to the Chautauqua Police Department. This will mark the ninth police officer to leave our community in the last 15 years to go to the Chautauqua Police Department, so we wish him well, and we'll be working to backfill that position. In regards to the Henry Street Project, last week on February 22nd, I met with Derek Julian and the Project Manager to make sure that the scope of the project was all covered and that what the Softball Association was looking for in the building and what the town should be assured was in place. And it was a meeting with the Project Manager, and we were assured that everything is ongoing. We still continue to try to work with National Grid. We have a new Project Manager for the community, a community liaison, that has been very responsive to our community anytime I've called her, and she will be following up on that work, and hopefully we have that completion within the pendent period, hopefully by the end of March. It is all dependent on the National Grid, but everything seems to be in place. Now, update to the Budget and Finance Department, just for all Town Councilors. All the Departments have submitted their budget. We were successful in completing our end-of-the-year fiscal year 2023, and we're able to open the FY '25 budget season in Munis. We'll be working together with our Finance Department, Dean Acabucci, Michelle Hill, all the Departments, to make sure that we have a budget presentation. Originally, I had hoped to get a budget presented to the Town Council and community by March 11th, however, we'll push that off to the second meeting in March to make that presentation, which would still fully comply with the Charter for the Town of Southbridge. We're also reviewing all our capital budgets and taking stock of what was proposed in prior years' capital budgets, and trying to get a handle on what had been requested through previous years, and come up with a solid plan for the future. We continue to monitor the FY '24 budget to make sure that we're in good stead there. On another note, water and sewer bills are being finalized and should be out by early March, and the motor vehicle excise tax bills were issued and will be due on March 21st, 2024, and our FY '23 audit is now ongoing and started today. In regards to the solid waste and recycling, that is the biggest issue that we have going on throughout the town. We had a meeting today with Casseller, and the flyers should be in the mail and should be received by residents very shortly. We continue to push out information to the community in a variety of different ways. As I mentioned before, in the lobby of the Town Hall, in the library, in the Community Center, we have the post boards. We are now, Maritza has worked to get A-frames that are being completed by the Center of Hope with additional information that will be placed at the post office and the library. The Board of Health has continued to review the solid waste regulations and have that on their next meeting agenda to talk about regulations, because we have a lot of, they are the ones responsible for putting together the regulations as to what will constitute any additional properties, single families, multi-families, and fine structures. They are continuing to work on that. I'm sure everybody has noticed it's being pushed out by the YouTube, our cable access, that Maritza and Anna had done a presentation that is also in Spanish, and that is out and about on a variety of different platforms, including YouTube, social media. We're pushing that out. If Councilors can push that information out as well, that would be fantastic. On this Thursday, February 29th, at 1:00 PM at the Senior Center, Maritza will be holding a conversation and coffee for the curbside-related questions with Dan as well. A reminder that the Household Hazardous Waste Day, our last one prior to the transition will be March 30th. That information is on our town's website. Additionally, we, Maritza has been able to have Big Bunny and a variety of other places put messages on their message board. If you go by Big Bunny and look at their LED display, there is information relative to curbside on that. Additionally, I've been informed that the LED sign for the Town Hall has been scheduled for installation this Friday, so once that's up, we'll be pushing out information in that vein. So, we continue to work towards the transition to this curbside program with an implementation date of April 1st, and we are going to continue to push out as much information as possible quickly. And finally, today I mark six months in my position as Town Manager. I just want to thank all my Department Heads, all the employees in the Town of Southbridge for this transition during the last six months. We often think in the Town Hall that we're not accomplishing a lot because there is so much to do, but even the little things that we're accomplishing every day, it is a testament to all the work that all our employees are doing. It truly is a team, and everybody's pulling in the same direction to fix a multitude of different issues and incentives and things to move this town forward, but I just want to thank them all for that, and the Town Council for their support at this time. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to Seven, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the Council on any issues that are not on the Council Agenda? If not, moving on to Presentations. We do not have a presentation today. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Matthew Alex of Harrisville, Rhode Island, as a full-time firefighter for the Town of Southbridge effective immediately, with the start date of March 25th, 2024, upon successful completion of all medical, psychological testing, including passing the state physical assessment test, background checks, and state ethics training. It's a motion.
Second.
The motion by Dow, seconded by Town Manager, I mean, excuse me. Subcommittee Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, this was voted by all at the Subcommittee Meeting on Wednesday night.
Thank you. Unanimous vote of the Subcommittee. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to recommend two individuals for appointment as firefighters, full-time firefighters in the Town of Southbridge. Just for the Council and the public, we did follow the process that was approved by Town Council back on June 7th, 2021. We had a number of very qualified candidates, and these two individuals that I'm happy to recommend tonight made it to the top of the list. They're ready to start as soon as possible, and we look forward to a long career here in Southbridge, and I will turn it over to the Chief for any additional information.
Chief Domodin?
Thank you, everybody. Councilors, family that are here tonight, and citizens. We, as the Town Manager has said, it's a very lengthy process that we do with both what you'll see tonight earlier, later on, is a promotional process and also this hiring process. This Agenda Item is to appoint Matthew. Matthew currently resides in Hashville, Rhode Island, which is within our 15-mile residency requirement with our collective bargaining agreement, which is the local 2095. He was born here in Southbridge, so he used that as a caveat. We like that. His family was originally from Webster at that time, but recently, at that point, they did relocate. From 2022, he was employed by Central Falls Fire Department, and he currently is there. His previous employment goes back to 2015, when his wife was relocated for work in Delaware, where he worked for Camden, Wyoming Fire Department, where at that time he also obtained his full-time firefighting credentialing. During the interview process, I asked Matthew, "Why Southbridge?" His response was, "I was born here." And then he went on to say he wanted to work for a department that is rural but has a city-like atmosphere. As what you've heard from many Councilors and myself and the Police Chief, we do have a small city here in Southbridge, so that was one of his comments that he made, and I found that was very fitting for the situation. During our hiring process, Matthew displayed a high degree of integrity, responsibility, ambition towards his firefighter and EMT career. There was some conversation in the process, just to let you all know, he currently was certified, he actually is certified EMT in Rhode Island, but over the last week has provided the appropriate documentation for his EMT Massachusetts certification. He's met, like I said before, Matthew has already completed a full-time fire academy in Delaware and will not have to attend the Massachusetts Fire Academy. This will mean we won't lose him for 10 weeks during the initial phases of his probation, so he'll be with us the whole time to do the rest of his training within the Fire Department. I am very honored, and I would like to recommend to the Council, Matthew Alex to be appointed as the next full-time firefighter.
If you have a speech, sir?
Do you have a speech, okay? Thank you. Thank you.[1123.08][1123.08](laughter)
Hold on, they didn't raise their hand yet.
Okay. All right. All those, any questions? If no questions, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present.[1134.65][1134.65](applause) Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Jesse Crockett Sears of North Brookfield, Mass, as a full-time firefighter for the Town of Southbridge effective immediately, with the start date of March 25th, 2024, upon successful completion of all medical and psychological testing, including passing the state physical assessment test, background checks, and state ethics training.
It's a motion.
Motion by Ortiz?
Second.
Second by Counsel Shenyer. Counsel Shenyer, your recommendation to Subcommittee?
Unanimous by the Committee.
Unanimous by Subcommittee. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Previously articulated, a strong recommendation for the appointment. As you can see, Matthew is very well qualified. Jesse Crockett Sears is also very well qualified for the position. As you know, we run very heavy on EMS calls and fire. This individual serves as an EMT for Cataldo Ambulance in the City of Holyoke, which we just mentioned earlier is very much similar to Southbridge, with a number of calls, and he's well qualified for the job, and it's my pleasure to recommend him, his appointment to confirm.
Chief Domodin?
Great. Thank you again, everybody. Jesse currently resides in North Brookfield, which again is within our 15-mile radius for requirement through the collective bargaining agreement, as the Chairman just said, excuse me, Town Manager just said. He currently works full-time in Holyoke for Cataldo Ambulance since the beginning of this year. He also continues to be involved with the North Brookfield and Spencer Fire Departments as PREDAM employees. In his time off, he assists his girlfriend and her family with the operations of Brookfield Orchards, so there's a plug.[1263.41][1263.41](laughter) During the interview process, again, we felt it was important to say, "Why Southbridge?" His response was, "I want to work for a traditional fire department that has a good mix of fire and EMS calls," and he also during his interview said that he would also like to see himself take a paramedic program in the future. Southbridge Fire Department does have a great call volume mix, and we always want to have more paramedics in our system. It's very important for patient care. He is currently a Mass EMT certified, although he has obtained his certifications in firefighter I-1 through the Call Vol Fire Academy, he still will need to go through the 10-week fire academy, and it's, again, I'm very honored and pleasured to recommend Jesse Crockett Sears to the Fire Department as an appointment.
Thank you. Jesse, do you have a speech tonight?
Could we vote?
No. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present.[1321.41][1321.41](applause) Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of firefighter Jonathan Peretti to the rank of Lieutenant with the Southbridge Fire Department for a indefinite term effective immediately.
It's a motion.
Seconded by Dow.
Mr. Chairman, this was unanimous vote of the Committee.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. In regards to the process for the promotions of Lieutenant, in 2018, as a member of the Council, we had a lot of conversations about the promotional process for Lieutenant. That was adopted by a Town Council in 2018. Having been on the Council side and then serving as the Town Manager and going through the assessment, we always had questions about how the assessments process work. I'm happy to report that I'm very pleased with the way the Assessment Center and the promotional process has worked in this instance. Just as a little aside, and I'll let the Chief talk about the qualifications, when we talked about the Assessment Center and the process, I asked the Chief not to mention to me what the rankings were in the Assessment Center, and we went through the interview process, and I have to say that it was very consistent. All four individuals that participated in the Assessment Center for the Lieutenant had great qualifications, a mix of different experiences, and were very fortunate to have the number of individuals in the Fire Department that can step forward to be the next Lieutenant. However, I'm very honored to ask the Town Council to confirm my appointment of firefighter Jonathan Peretti as the next Lieutenant in the Fire Department. I have known Jonathan from back in the day. When he first came over to Southbridge Fire, I served with him as an EMT in the Town of Brimfield, and we always used to have a great time. I affectionately call him Pro B Peretti, because in my mind, he will always be Pro B Peretti from the day he started, but it's my pleasure and honor to appoint him as Lieutenant.
Chief Domodin?
Thank you, and Jack, that is, it does sum up Jonathan. Jonathan Peretti has been a very dedicated and active member of the Southbridge Fire Department over 23 years. Although his career in public safety started 31 years ago with the Brimfield and Sturbridge Departments, he has continued to excel in his knowledge of the ways of the Southbridge Fire Department and its citizens' needs. Over the years, he's been active as a Fire District 7 dive team member. Educated, he has also educated many students and citizens in our community with our fire safety program. Currently, he is a member of our own fire investigation unit. He also had served in past years as the EMS coordinator, where I make important note that during that time, he was one of the stakeholders that put together the licensure for the intermediate-level ALS ambulance service back in the early 2000s, which is an additional level of EMTs that we have. Now, we have paramedics, which is the highest, but he was very instrumental in making that all happen. So, many years of exposure of many incidents, creating operational policies, has given him the experience of managing members of our department. In 2020, he was appointed an ex-officer, and right now, he is currently acting, soon, hopefully, with a show of hands. He was the acting officer, but he'll hopefully be the next Lieutenant. So, thank you.
Mr. Peretti, do you have anything to address the Council? Your management is kind of mandatory.
I'd like to thank the Council for the opportunity to serve the town in this role. I look forward to moving up and taking on your responsibilities as Lieutenant. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Counsel Shenyer?
If I may. It's with honor and pleasure tonight that I support Jonathan Peretti as a Lieutenant in the Southbridge Fire Department. I have known John since he started in the Fire Department as a probationary firefighter. Being a 22-year career firefighter myself, I have always found John to be a product of a traditional fire department that we all look forward to keep and maintain. John is a person that can bring joy to a group, and he'll be there for the sadness that comes also. I think he's going to be an added person for the command staff of the Fire Department, and I believe that he'll continue bringing and maintaining the traditions that we know as a fire department and firefighters. The only thing I would advise anybody is don't take a Baby Ruth candy bar from him if he offers it. Thank you.
Counsel Montigny?
Thank you very much. Over the course of the last year and a half on Council, I had the pleasure of meeting a lot of the firemen, as I learned about the fire station project. Mr. Joe Van, before he was hired, was the Fire Building Chair, and I wanted to learn more from him, so I got the pleasure of meeting a lot of different guys and gals that worked there, and let me tell you, they are some of the best people around, because I then had the unfortunate pleasure, displeasure, actually, of having to see them quite all too often, five or six times. My father had to take some ambulance rides as he was bedridden with severe pain, and Mr. Peretti was by far and away the most pleasant experience for my father, when I will never forget that day, and he's an outstanding gentleman, and we should all be very thankful that we have him here as Lieutenant now. Thank you.
Any other comments by any other Councilors? If not, I'd just like to, I'd just like to add, when you look at his resume, you know he's the man for the job. When you talk to his fellow firefighters, you know he's the man for the job. But what you don't see in his resume is one of the strongest parts of this gentleman, and that's his sense of humor. Everybody that knows this gentleman knows his sense of humor is one of his strong points, and going forward, I wish you the best of luck as Lieutenant. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous.[1741.12][1741.12](applause) We are, we are going to swear, Matty Dowell is going to swear him in right after the handshake.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to have his wife pin him first, or you want to have Matty Dowell?
You are the Chief, you're in charge of the ceremony.[1777.26][1777.26](laughter)
Anybody have a quick watch?
It's okay if you grab some skin.
Do you, Jonathan Peretti solemnly swear to perform all duties and commitment of you as a Lieutenant for the Southbridge Fire Department for an indefinite period of time, faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and by laws of the town of Southbridge, so help you God.
I do.
Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Steven Marquise to the Historical Commission effective immediately until June 30th, 2025, pending state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Mr. Town Manager? Recommended to subcommittee.
This was recommended unanimously unanimously at EHS.
Unanimous for Education Services. Town Manager?
Thank you. Mr. Marquise is a new resident at Town Southbridge, owns his historic home on Chapin Street, appeared before the subcommittee, gave his comments about wishing to serve, and recommended for appointment.
Any discussion on the appointment? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Get a little crazy. No, let's keep going. Agenda item number 13. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Severino Rios to the Council on Aging effective immediately until June 30th, 2025, pending state ethics in good standing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Manu Chair?
This was also recommended unanimously by EHS.
It was recommended unanimously by EHNS. Town Manager?
Thank you. This will fill out the council of agent at this time. People that, a lot of individuals up here are very familiar with Mrs. Rios. She's a staple of this community, longtime resident, would be a great addition to the council of agent.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number 14. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Robert Pocelli to the Airport Commission effective immediately June until June 30th, 2024, pending state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Counselor Shinia. Airport Commission?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, yep. Unanimous at General Government Subcommittee.
Unanimous at General Government to confirm. Any further discussion? No comment? All of?
Dr. Pocelli recently purchased his home up on Pleasant Street, adjacent to the airport. He has a airplane at the airport, has been there for a number of years. This would, the reason it's till June 30th, 2024, is to fill the term of our former member, Mr. Brackett, who had passed away tragically, and then we'll reappoint him is just to keep the the terms consistent. And it was reviewed with Mr. Clements, the Chair of the Airport Commission, and recommended favorably.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number 15. Vote to approve changes in the job description of the Town Agent of Solid Waste and Recyclable Material Collection MS-19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ortiz, seconded by Daniels. Counselor Monteggi?
Mr. Chairman, it was recommended unanimously at subcommittee for 14, 15, and 16. These are all linked together.
Unanimous recommendation. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16. Vote to approve the changes in the job description for the Solid Waste Recycling Monitor S-9.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Ortiz. Counselor Monteggi?
This is unanimous at subcommittee.
Unanimous at subcommittee to confirm. Any further discussion? Counsel Rivas?
Just a quick question through you, Mr. Chair. What happens, maybe in the last meeting, we might have talked about this, I can't remember, about her previous position? What happens to that?
This is a different position. This is the Solid Waste Recycling Monitor.
Right, right.
So that in the previous, so do you want to talk about when I confirm her appointment, about what happens with her position?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
This is the job description for the monitor, the inspectors that we're doing right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were on 17.
Yep, no problem.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Maritza Santos as the Town Agent for Solid Waste and Recyclables Material Collection MS-19, effective date March 18th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Ortiz. Town Manager?
Thank you. It's my honor to confirm or ask the council to confirm my appointment of Maritza to the position of Town Agent to that question, Counsel Rivas's question. It's her, her position would be backfilled within the inspections Department. This is a totally separate position that will require a lot of time, effort, and I do appreciate Maritza stepping up during the transition with Anna because of her institutional knowledge, not only in the Board of Health, the Department of Health, but also working with Anna with the landfill, because there will be some landfill. She was a natural progression to promote her to the position, and it's my honor to promote her to this position.
Thank you.
And it was also unanimously recommended at subcommittee.
Unanimous recommendation to subcommittee confirm. Any further discussion? If not, I'd just like to add a comment. Maritza is the longstanding member of that department. People have come and gone, and she has been there. And this is basically an interdepartmental transfer, but she's been the backbone of that department and continues to work diligently on behalf of the town of Southbridge. Maritza, you deserve it more than anything. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Moving on to 18. Vote, vote to receive acceptance of the non-discussionary grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fire State Fire Services in the amount of $12,500 for the purpose of the demolition and site work related to the fire station project in the town of Southbridge, allowing the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia.
This was unanimously approved by the subcommittee.
Unanimously approved by the subcommittee? Any discussion?
This was from $25,000, cut in half, right? Correct, yes. By the governor? Thank you. I just want to add, if I could, Mr. Chairman, through you, the question was asked by Counsel Marquetti at the meeting, why I had signed that grant. And I said, you know, I said I had signed it because it was a grant application, but I knew there was another reason why. I do have the paperwork. I'll gladly send it to Counselor Marquetti or any council that wishes to have it. We received the email on Thursday, January 25th, at 11:10 a.m., stating that we had the paperwork and the deadline to return the grant contract documents was 5:00 p.m. on February 5th. So they had a quick turnaround for me to send this, and because it was receipt of money, that is why I did sign it, to get it back. But that is the reason why, and I do have the documentation if needed.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 19. Vote to authorize the town to submit and accept a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the replacement of security fence and gates at the Southbridge Municipal Airport. Allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia. Discussion?
This was unanimously recommended at subcommittee.
Unanimously recommended by the subcommittee. I'm going to go to the podium, and then after we can have a question by council.
Thank you, Chairman. Rick Clements, Chairman of the Airport Commission. This is a project that came came to us through Mass DOT or an article. They came through and said they had extra funds, so they were looking for shovel ready projects. This, we teed up this project a year ago to do all the conservation work. Everything was ready to go, so they said if they get some additional funds in the next couple of years, they'll they'll go ahead and put the fence in. They called us just about a month ago and said, hey, we get, we have the funds, move forward on this project. It's 100% paid by Mass DOT, no cost to the town. It's about 7,800 feet of fence to go around the airport.
Any discussion?
Just, I give, I did pass out to the council the updated bid document, cost estimate that was received late this afternoon. So that does give you the scope of the project, and again, it is 100% funded by Mass DOT.
Counselor Marquetti?
I'll yield to you. You wanted to say something?
I just want one other item. Yeah, I said it's money that they have, has to be spent by June 30th, so that's why there's a fast track on this, to get the contract, put together, get it out the bids, get it back, and get the fence in before June 30th and the fiscal year.
Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This tonight is just for engineering, though, correct?
It's engineering and also to apply to the state for the grant.
For the entire project?
Entire project.
Okay. And how much was the engineering? I wrote it down. I didn't bring it up.
Engineering is approximately $157,000, and then they're estimating, the engineers estimated the cost of the fence at $1.5 million.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Thank you. We want a 20 vote to submit a letter of hesitation of the State 911 Development Department to participate in the towns of Chelton, Sturbridge, and Spencer in studying the formation of a regional public safety answering point, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia. Discussion?
This was unanimously approved by subcommittee.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'll vote in support of this tonight, but I just want it known that I do have some reservations about this, just generally speaking. Thank you.
Counselor, I mean, excuse me, Town Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Daniels. This would just simply allow us to do a study. The previous study was completed in 2017, and there were some concerns at that time. We have a whole different set of chiefs, town managers, town administrators. Everybody has concerns. I think this time around, when we do the study, there's going to be more input by town counselors, fire police chiefs, to make sure that it's the right solution for the towns, because visualization on this level, every town is having an issue getting dispatchers and managing that dispatch center, so it's going to be done correctly with the right reasons and intent, what's best for all residents of all communities and the safety of our residents.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I do have major league reservations, and it's a study. And let it come back, because we've already moved it once to the Police Department, and I'm kind of skeptical of how we did what we did, and now it's another study to look at it, but I'm in favor of the study to move forward. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Number 21. Vote to accept the Southbridge Community Electricity Plan and submit to the Department of Public Utilities for its review and approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 22. Vote to accept a donation of $300 from Harbor Freight to the Southbridge Fire Department to be used at the chief's discretion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion.
This was unanimously approved by subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to 23. Vote, vote to town manager's recommendation to declare a surplus from the town's public schools, one Hustler, M-number 925230, S!8090290, along with multiple attachments, and allow the town manager to dispose of as per property, as per policy.
So moved.
Motion by Dow, seconded by, motion by Ortiz, seconded by Dow. Discussion?
This was recommended unanimously as well at the EHS meeting.
Unanimous by Education Services. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all present. Moving on to council's forum. Counselor Rivas?
So I wanted to share here some of the information that we had for families at Saturday's community forum in regards to parent support group that will be held by the Kiva Center at 346 Main Street, March 7th and 21st, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. A bilingual parent support group will be hosted by Jasmine Quinones at the Kiva Center. This group is intended to provide a safe space for parents and other guardians to come together and receive emotional support and community connectivity in a space with like-minded individuals. For more information regarding the group, please reach out to jasminequinones@jkinnones@kivacenters.org or via telephone at 774-289-2240. Texting is also appropriate. We also are putting together a student teen support group, and that is open to students at Southbridge Middle High School, also at the Kiva Center, March 6, 13, 20, 27, from 5:30 to 6:30. Snacks will be provided, and for more information, you can contact Jasmine Quinones at the same email and phone number, or you can reach out to me at 508-981-4081. Text messages are accepted. Please let us know and share this information with other families. We really want to support our students during these times that they are feeling that they're, you know, they're being harassed and bullied at school. So please share the information far and wide for our students.
Counselor Dow?
Nothing at that time, thank you.
Counselor Shinia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's with sadness that I must announce tonight that Captain Roger Ford of the Southbridge Fire Department passed away last Thursday night. Captain Ford is my brother-in-law, and he was a community leader and businessman in town. He owned the Fork in the Road Restaurant and the Hook and Ladder Restaurant. He was a, as I said, a captain and had over 20 years' service with this community as a career firefighter. In my condolences to my family and his family, thank you, and that's all.
Before we go any further, if we, counselors wouldn't mind, could we have a moment of silence for Captain Roger Ford, who served the town in many ways? Moment of silence? Thank you very much. Roger's going to be missed. Counselor Monteggi? Counselor Montigny?
Thank you very much. I had the pleasure of attending the thing Saturday night that Counsel Rivas held for the school, for what she's talking about, which is great that they're offering such a good space at the Kiva program. It was four or five times in March, they have some dates there. Counsel Dow attended, along with Counsel Shenyu. It really wasn't too well-attended. Unfortunately, there weren't a lot of students and family there, so the discussion kind of got off-topic, and they spent more time bashing the chairman of the Town Council than Dr. Vilar, which seems kind of like part of the walls, I think our chairman was alluding to earlier, that we need to be broken down so we can all get back on the same page and fight for our students and not for ourselves. But, yeah, I wasn't given an opportunity to talk, to defend myself there, so I don't really have anything to say, except that we all got to get together and, you know, commend the people that are doing hard work for our students. Counsel Rivas providing a safe space, trying to set up a bus someday to go up to Boston. We got the chairman of the council and the Town Manager already in talks with Holyoke. They mentioned Boston, and we're all fighting the same fight, receivership and Dr. Vilar, and we all have to align ourselves to that again before we continue to move forward together, and especially with Holyoke and hopefully Lawrence, too. Strengthen numbers. Our school committee will rally everybody together, and then we will make our voices known loud and clear, and I appreciate everybody who did attend this Saturday, and thank you for Counsel Rivas for holding the event for the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just first, my condolences, my family's condolences to you and your family, George. I'm sorry for your loss. Don't forget, get out there, I know they already talked about tonight, but get out there and vote tonight. Today was the first time I ever voted early in my entire life, and it was pretty interesting, and the town clerks should be proud of all the volunteers that are out there doing this right now. And lastly, I usually don't bring stuff like this up right at a council meeting, but there's, just to the Town Manager, I received a complaint about the LNG plant and the noise and how loud it is at evening, about three-quarters of a mile, even a mile around the radius of the new plant. It has been sent to the Board of Health over at Charlton, they're looking into it, but I think it's important to, since they put that right next door to us, and then our citizens are hearing that right in a residential area, that is important for the Southbridge to step up through our, maybe our Board of Health or wherever you see fit, Mr. Town Manager. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Ortiz?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. About a week and a half ago, there was a fire in the building that I'm a building manager for, and I would like, no one was injured. Fortunately, no one was hurt, but there was significant property damage. But I would like to thank Chief Normandin, Deputy Ullik, Lieutenant Lavoy, Lieutenant Kalenian and his group, the Building Inspector Mike Julian, and a few other people that I can't remember were there, there were other inspections people that were there, the Police Department and their details, and also the American Red Cross, who came for disaster services. Once again, the public safety departments in this town, to me, by my observation, showed their true mettle, their true worth. I keep, I've heard stories on and off over a long period of time. When it happens to you personally, you see it firsthand, and you get a taste of what it's all about, and I can't say enough about the public services that we have, the people here in the Town Hall, and also at the police station and the fire station. Can't say enough about it. They did a spectacular job. They kept the situation to a minimum, and we're moving on. Things are good, but I would like to publicly thank them for what they did. Thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel, Counsel Marketti?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to discuss the Town Manager and the council chair's visit with Holyoke last weekend. First of all, I want to start off by saying I wasn't opposed to it. I think it was a pretty good idea. We might as well try whatever we can try to end receivership here. The only issue I had about it was that I don't think, I don't think the councilors were really aware that you were planning this. I know that I'm the vice chairman of the Town Council, and the first time I heard about it was at the EHS Subcommittee meeting. So, and I know that the town charter is very clear on this. I think it's all general corporate legislation, policy issues, expenses are all vested in the Town Council, so there are nine councilors here. I think all nine councilors should have had a chance to weigh in on this. No doubt, I have no doubt, we would have all approved of the planned meeting to Holyoke. Now, at the EHS Subcommittee meeting, there was an agenda item for a no-confidence letter to be sent. I don't know where it was going to be sent, it was just a no-confidence letter. The meeting turned into a shouting match and some finger pointing. Some councilors were afraid that we were going to upset the new commissioner. I really don't care about the new commissioner. Doesn't matter to me if we hurt his feelings or not. Seems to me a letter to the commissioner would hurt his feelings, but meeting with Holyoke, that wouldn't hurt his feelings? So, I don't think Counsel Rivas was really aware of this visit either. I know that Counselor Chair said that she didn't have a clue what was going on behind the scenes. I think if you would let her know what was going on, maybe we could have avoided this whole, this whole episode. I, Counsel, the council chair likes to use football analogies, so I'll use one. When you're in a football game, you don't just put the defense out there, you also put the offense out there. You have a lot of different plays, you use whatever it takes to win, that's what you do. Trick plays, special teams. So, I really don't have a problem with this letter that Counsel Rivas wants to send. I think we should use it. I was in favor of postponing it for now, though, because I think it needed to be a little bit more, it was a little vague, in my opinion, but anyways, I'm not bashing you over it. I thought it was a good idea to go there. I just would like the council informed when you're going to do something like this. I want to be able to weigh in on it. I want to have some input. And I also think, I was glad that you said you were going to involve the school committee, because I do think they should get involved in this. They're going to have to step it up when receivership ends. And Counsel Rivas and I, we don't get along on a lot of things, we have our differences of opinions, but I do admit, she has worked pretty hard on this. We talk about going to Boston, she went to Boston, so I do think you should include Counsel Rivas in your future talks on that one. So, it was a good idea. Not bashing it, just saying I would like some input, a chance for input on it, that's all.
I welcome the opinions on what we should be doing and shouldn't be doing. I don't get invited to every protest or whatever it is. The only thing I want to tell you is that there are not two sides in Southbridge, which this person is promoting, a two-sided battle. And she wants to pick, you know, me as one of the sides and her as the other side, said in a public meeting. I took kind of offense to that, because if there's one thing I understand about the takeover, nobody up here at council, and nobody sitting out there, is on an opposite team. And if you're going to go in analogies and you want to talk to me, I can say this. Your prior planning of the game plan, which you do not expose to everybody, you create it with the head coach, which would be the chairman of the council, and you would network it to the point where it's ready for presentation. There are a lot of moving parts to this. There's a receivership, there's a school committee, there is a council, and it doesn't seem to me that people know their role as far as where these vote of no confidence should go. We all have different opinions. Instead of looking disorganized, I'm the gentleman that would like to provide the leadership as chairman of this council and as a counselor and as a citizen, that if I have certain people in certain places that can help us, I'm going to use my resources, my networking, to get the job done. Now, I've waited five years for everybody else's ideas, and we're still in receivership, and I've been chastised for some of my ideas. Well, when you become the chairman and she becomes the chairman, you can be the chairman of the council. As long as I'm sitting in this chair, there are not two sides. There is one side, Southbridge first. I said it when I ran, I said it when I got the chair. I am working diligently behind the scenes on this receivership. I'm going to continue to do it, and when I think it should be reported, when it's ready to council, I will report it to council. I keep the manager informed. I will keep the Education Services Subcommittee informed as needed. A subcommittee chairman works for the chair. You're appointed by the chair. The chair decides what goes to subcommittee. I've been very lenient on this. I've been very workable with the Education Services Committee, and I think that going forward, everybody has a role at a particular time. But when someone says there's two sides on this issue in Southbridge, it's all rhetoric. We need to be all together here if you think you're getting this back, and I think the coaches' game plan is going to work. I won't let you down, Mr. Vice Chairman, and we're going to move forward on this as a team when it's time to go on to the field. But we have single people running on the field without the team behind them, and I think that going forward, let's take it easy here, and let's work with the school committee on some of the things that we should be doing that we've never done in the last five years. And this is how it's supposed to be done, and I don't think we knew how it was supposed to be done originally. We have it now, and we're going to implement it. We're going to work very hard on this. I'm going to put time in, I'm going to travel around, I'm going to look for any political help that I can get on moving forward on this. There's a lot of stuff going on in Boston with the seating of the new commissioner, the whole committee itself has got its own issues it's got to deal with, and I think if we be patient and we work together to build coalitions, when the time comes, when we're supposed to go on the field, in March, we will, and we'll do it successfully, and everybody will know what's going on. I'm not holding back anything. I just think that we build these coalitions, and then we have them, and then we do it right on the school committee side and the council side. People want to have votes of no confidence, and you think that's productive, put it up to the committee, the committee voted to postpone it, and give it some time. Let's breathe during this thing. This is not just charge with burning torches and yell and scream, and, you know, we want our schools back. Been doing that for about seven years. It's not working. So, I think going forward, we need a little bit of a twist to our approach, and I think you'll be very happy with the results.
All right. Thank you. I'm just asking that you include...
I don't want to debate, I answered your question.
Right.
Now...
And I'm going to continue...
Number 25.
I'm going to continue with my council's forum. Thank you.
All right, I'll let it go.
I also said to the Town Manager, I spoke about the ice falling from the Town Hall roof. My wife came here the other day to pay bills, took a step up the side here, she said a chunk of ice fell down, she almost got decapitated. I don't want my wife walking around without a head, so I have asked that the maintenance department take a look at it. I haven't gotten any feedback on that. So, and which also reminds me that we did vote a little while ago to have an architect look at the renovations of the Town Hall, so at some point, at your convenience, if you could let me know the status of that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll let you know right now.
Okay.
Right now, we're trying to figure out the finances of the town of Southbridge. Until then, I can't hire an architect until we figure out everything where the monies are.
Okay. I thought we had set some funds aside for that ARPA money or something. I thought it was ARPA money.
We're trying to confirm all that information.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your update on curbside. I still haven't received any mailing on that. We are running out of time here, and so, but I'm glad that we're going to get something in the mail soon, because residents have to have some time to reply to that opt-out form.
We did, just as a matter of record, I know you had provided some information about another carrier coming to the town. We did contact that carrier to say, if you were to pick up trash at my residence, how much would it be? It was above, still above the cost, so...
All right.
We're still in...
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Moving on to 25. Discussion of next meeting day. As Vice Chairman?
Next meeting is Monday, March 11th, 2024, 7:00 p.m. in the council chamber. Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number 26. Vote to adjourn.
Soon.
Motion by Shenyu. Seconded by Dow. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?